This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening and welcome to our August Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frieden, North Haven's First Selectman, joined as always by Mr. William Piper, our Second Selectman, and joined by Sally Buemi, Ms. Sally Buemi, our Third Select Woman. Thank you for joining us here at our August meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three, is there any public comment this evening to the agenda? Moving on to item number four, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from July 11. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve those minutes.
A little second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Item number five, before I introduce Paul Fabula, I'd like to tee up this discussion to share with you what this is about. The year 2020, there'll be a United States Census profile. The last time we did this here in North Haven was 2010. The integrity of a pristine census is critically important to us as residents in the state of Connecticut. Very shortly, you'll hear and you'll see a presentation from Paul, but I'd like to tell you a couple of facts that perhaps you may not realize. That over $10 billion of funding into Connecticut comes from the federal government, and that encompasses subsidization or partial subsidization of approximately 55 different programs. And some of those programs are critically important to the residents of the state of Connecticut. As an example, Medicare Part B, school breakfast programs. That is another critical program that is involved with those 55 different programs. There are also programs like federal highway dollars sent to Connecticut, which of course is also critically important. And for our special needs students, special needs grants are part of that $10 billion that is in concert with the numbers that are calculated from the United States Census. So Paul came to see me a few weeks back, and I thought it would be very important for our citizens here in North Haven to listen to and watch this presentation, because we're going to be moving forward now with this probably early in the year, in 2020, perhaps a little bit before, but Paul will share with you the details. So Paul, the podium is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. As First Selectman said, my name's Paul Fabula. I am the Partnership Specialist for the United States Census Bureau, working right here in Connecticut. And I just want to talk to you a little bit about the 2020 Census. As you can see, the mission and the purpose of the Census is, we are the nation's leading quality provider of statistical data. We take that very serious, we understand how important it is to get good quality data out there to everybody. The decennial census is conducted once every 10 years, as we said before, and we count not just the population, but right now, we're actually moving into starting our housing unit, because before we count everyone, we need to know where they live to count them. The purpose of the Census, you'll hear me repeat this over and over, you'll hear every Census employee repeat this over and over, is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Outside of the decennial census that takes place every 10 years, the United States Census Bureau has 130 other programs. The unemployment numbers that come out the first Friday of every month, those are, we collect that data. The BLS, they actually just put the data out. We also do a business survey, American Community Survey, which some people know is the former Longform Census. So if you do see Census employees out there in years that don't end in zero, there's a good chance that they are actual Census employees. Why do we do the Census? It's in the Constitution. The Constitution says every year since 1790, we will conduct a census of every housing unit and every person living inside the United States. This census, we're expecting to count 330 million people and over 140 million housing units. Every response collected by the Census Bureau and the Census Bureau employees is protected by Title 13. That states that any federal employee that knowingly discloses information can be subject to five years in prison and a $250,000 fine. The only purpose of collecting data from the Census is to produce statistics on the United States. We also use the Census to determine the number of seats in the House of Representatives. It's going to decide how states are going to set up school districts, voting districts, state legislative districts. And as the First Selectman said, more than $675 billion federal dollars are disseminated across the country every single year based on Census dollars. That's roughly over $10 billion for the state of Connecticut. Also, businesses use our information to decide where to open up other businesses, and it provides a benchmark on the population for every other survey that takes place in the United States. All responses are protected by Title 13. That's the federal law that says, if I was to disclose information, I would do five years in prison and pay a $250,000 fine. Census Bureau employees are sworn to this for life. This job ends for me next year. Next year, I start with another federal agency, I go back to the private sector. My oath does not end. I am sworn for life, if I ever disclose that information, I will be held legally liable. Being that this is also going to be the first census that's going to be offered online, we take cybersecurity as serious as you possibly could. The decennial census is the largest non-military operation that the United States government takes part in, and we do it every 10 years. So to do something that big, you need to have a plan. Right now, in the next few days, we're going to be starting our program, establishing where to count. We're going out, we're looking at homes that may have been destroyed from Hurricane Sandy, Hurricane Irene. We're going to look at homes that might be just being built since 2010, since the last time we did the census. We're going to look at new apartment buildings. So you will see Census employees out there, they're going to have Census bags, they'll have our 2020 logo on them. They're going to have Census iPhones, and they will have Census IDs showing that they're Census employees, and these are people that you can trust. If you are unsure if the person that's coming to your home is a Census employee, you can contact someone at your city, someone in the city can contact me, and I will verify that person is a Census Bureau employee and not someone pretending to be one. Right now, my job, and what we want to get North Haven involved in, is motivating people to respond. We want to let people know that the Census is safe, it's important, and it's now. It's time to get people ready to count them. So we're going to look for outreach on social media, we're going to look to put flyers up around town where we can, and we're going to look to put the message out that the census is happening. April 1st next year is Census Day, that's when we're going to go out. That's the official day of when we get a snapshot of who's living in the United States. Although March 13th is when we're actually going to start sending out forms. Because this is going to be the first census that you can respond online, we're going to send you a postcard with a 13-digit number. That number just shows your address. You're going to put that number into our website, and it will auto-populate your address, and you can fill out your census form online. The other way you're going to be able to do the census form is previously, you could call up on the phone and get some advice, information, request a new form. This census, we've decided that we're just going to take the information over the phone. Rather than sending you out a form, we have you on the phone, we're going to have you respond on the phone, and we'll fill out the form for you. The third way is we're going to send a form out. As of right now, it's supposed to go out with the fourth card that we're going to send you. If you haven't responded online, by the time you get a fourth card, we're going to send a fourth card and a paper form. Some people may choose to fill the form out, that's fine. As long as you fill out the census, it doesn't matter which method you use. The fourth and most expensive way that we want to limit as much as possible, that's the purpose of being here, that's the purpose of working with each town and city, is we're going to send people door-to-door to knock and ask you why you haven't filled out your census and get you to fill out your census form. It's a very expensive operation, we're going to be hiring hundreds of thousands of people across the country. Those are well-paying jobs here in North Haven, that's $21 an hour to be an numerator. But we would like to limit as many of those people out of jobs as we can. Finally, by December 31st of 2020, we will release all of our counts to the President. We're going to release the statistical numbers showing how many people live in each state and the counties. For April 1st, 2021, the federal government's going to release those numbers to the states, and the states will have that information so they can use it for redistricting and voting precincts. For this census, we're going to allow you to respond in 12 non-English languages. When I say respond, I mean you will be able to respond online or over the phone in one of these 12 languages. I'll go over them in the next slide. We're also hiring people that speak languages other than just English, as long as they're bilingual in English and another language, we can hire them. And we're going to have 59 non-English language guides to help people fill out these forms in languages that we can't realistically cover fully. We're also hiring people at the community level. When you get hired, you're not going to have to go drive two towns over and go to work. You're going to get to work right in your neighborhood. So you're going to know the area that you live in, you're going to know the people that you're serving. As you can see from this slide, Spanish is obviously going to be the most popular language. We already have several bilingual people working in the state of Connecticut that speak English and Spanish. All the languages in purple are languages that you'll be able to respond online or over the phone. And the languages out there in gray, those will have support for those languages. If you happen to see a language on here, if you happen to look at this and see a language that isn't on here, and you know people that need to be served in that language, you can let us know, and we're going to see if we can hire people that speak that language, we're going to see if we can hire translators, anything to serve that community. 2018, we're all finished. 2019, we are now opening up offices in Danbury, Hartford, and New Haven. These offices are support only, they're not open to the public, they're there to support me, they're there to support the enumerators, they're there to make sure we get everybody counted in the state of Connecticut. Early next year, we're going to start our advertising campaign. Census Day is April 1st, 2020, that's a date to remember. Non-response follow-up is going to begin in March and continues to July. That's when we're going to do our group quarters projects, we're going to count college students where they live. If they live on campus, we count them on campus in college. If someone is incarcerated, we count them where they are incarcerated. If you live at home while you go to college, you get counted at home. We count you where you live most of the year, next year, on April 1st. And once again, redistricting to the counts, we're going to give that to the states, March 31st, 2021. This is just a quick overview of what we've been working with right now. We've been answering to Providence, Rhode Island, and Manhattan, New York, because those offices in New Haven, Hartford, and Danbury aren't open yet. These are the positions that we're hiring for, this is our biggest need right now. Any position you see on here that has an asterisk next to it, those are positions that you can apply to at 2020census.gov/jobs. It's a catch-all application. You apply, we'll call you up and ask you if you're interested in one of these jobs. You make the decision if you want to take it or not, you get three chances to turn a job down. If after three chances you're not interested, we'll say, we're no longer going to consider you for any positions. The other jobs, the office managers, administrative managers, these jobs, you're going to have to go to USAjobs.gov, have a professional resume, have some work history, these are higher-paying jobs, these are full-time temporary jobs versus the asterisk jobs that are part-time temporary. But we are looking to hire for these positions right now, so encourage anybody that you know to apply to these. This is just an environment that most businesses, government agencies, state and local governments are dealing with. Constrained fiscal environment, rapidly changing use of technology. This census will be available online, on your computer, or on your mobile phone. And you could also apply for jobs on your mobile phone. We have declining response rates, anybody who's from Connecticut knows that we have people that live here part of the year and they live in another state part of the year. We need to make sure those people know that they get counted where they live most of the year. Or if they split their time evenly between two states perfectly evenly, where do they live on April 1st? That's where we count them. We don't want people filling out two forms. This is what we're looking to do, we have complete count committees all across the state, and we're looking to form one in North Haven, we're looking for someone that was willing to take up this challenge. We need to identify what are the issues that might cause someone in North Haven to not respond to the census. How do we identify those people? How do we make sure they know how important the census is, and how do we get them to fill out their census forms? Also pushing out the jobs. We already have a complete count committee in Connecticut. The Lieutenant Governor's Office has established a complete count committee. We're working with colleges, universities, and libraries all across the state. North Haven Library is already working with the Census Bureau to make sure that we have resources for people that can't fill out forms at home, may need to go to a library for assistance to apply for jobs or to fill out the census form. We're also going to be working with health agencies, hospitals, nonprofits, other government agencies, other non-government offices, and also area government services. Complete count committees, we like to form one in each town. Lieutenant Governor has said she would love to have a complete count committee in all 169 Connecticut municipalities. They can also have subcommittees where they look to meet the needs of other people. You might have needs to reach the elderly population, the homeless population, the veteran population. Wherever you think that you could serve your community best, that's where we'd like to get you to help reach out to people. For this, we have flyers, general flyers that we could put out there, we have flyers in different languages. Right now, it's mostly in Spanish, but we have a couple other that are just coming in. I can also give you some sample email messages. If you want to drop in some articles, we're working with several newspapers that are putting on information. We've been doing radio interviews. If you can give us somewhere to put the message out there, we will definitely use it. Becoming a partner with the Census is not that, it's not that much extra work. It really just requires inviting us to places that you think it would be a good fit for us to come. Speaking events like this are tremendous. This is what we're looking for. If you know a festival, a fair, or back-to-school, those are programs where we like to go. Sometimes when you go to back-to-school programs, you might have a children in the school that they're the only person in their home that speaks English. So we might have to reach out to that person to make sure that they know the census is coming up so they can tell their parents, they can say, hey, these programs are funded that we use through the census data. Recruiting is our biggest thing right now. We're definitely looking to hire a lot more people in New Haven County. So if you know anybody that's looking for part-time, temporary, high-paying work, encourage them to apply at 2020census.gov/jobs. Again, a complete count committee, I'm going to go over this pretty quickly. This is something that we look to start at at the government level, but this can be a nonprofit, this could be an everyday, normal citizen that just cares about the town of North Haven, and you want to start a complete count committee just to focus on getting people to respond to the census next year. If you care about this community and you want to help, please contact me, contact us, and we'll look to see ways that you can help. We look to get ex-offenders, we're working with a lot of programs like that. Veterans, senior citizens, philanthropic organizations. Faith-based is always an excellent way to reach out to people. For this, you would appoint a census liaison, someone that would be in touch with me, so I don't have to talk to everybody in an organization, I can have just one contact person. Makes it easier for all of us. Like us on social media, share our information, share our messages. Maybe just put up some flyers in your business, put up some job posters around town, that helps. Media kickoff's are great, we've been doing a lot of those with the Lieutenant Governor. Outreach and subcommittees, if you think that there's a smaller group inside a group that might need some help. This is an information of what we put the information out. When somebody says, "I don't want to give my information to the Census, I don't want my personal information out there." As you can see here, a census tract is about 4,000 to 6,000 people. You can't identify anybody from this information, it just shows statistical information on who lives in an area. For this area, you're looking at a total population of 4,478 with a low response score of 16.3. That means we're estimating 16.3% of that population in that area won't self-respond to the census next year. We need to figure out who that is and why. You also have information that we put out here that you could use for your organizations, such as children under 18 living in poverty. It's a low number, it's 3.84, but it is there. And if you're an organization that looks to help children living in poverty, this is how you know that information. This is how you learn where they are. Same thing with, we also now show health insurance. Who doesn't have health insurance by age group? That's a great thing that we're working with different nonprofits from the Yale organization to help identify. The data dissemination program is open to everybody, every citizen. The Census is a government program, it's open to the public. You can go to census.gov/academy, you can learn how to access our information. It's paid for with tax dollars, so it's available to you for free. You can look at webinars, learn how to see the information, learn what information we put out there, learn that we don't put out any personal identifying information. This is just our social media sites, Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, Pinterest. Again, you can like and share our information on there. The New York Partnership Program and our data dissemination program, if you have a large organization that you want to get in touch with anybody, I'll also leave my contact information with the town in case anybody needs to get in touch with me. And again, as I said before, the only purpose of the Census is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Thank you for the time.
Well, thank you. We will continue to work with you here in North Haven, and should you so desire, perhaps we could meet at the Senior Citizen Center, talk to some of the seniors. This program is in front of a live North Haven audience right now, and it will be played for the next 30 days. So in an effort to keep the momentum up and keep the awareness up, we would love to continue to work with you as we move through the balance of this year and into next year to ensure that we're doing everything we can to support this. And I want to commend this young man, not only is he a United States Army veteran, as Mr. Piper is, former Lieutenant Colonel in the Army, I was just mentioning that to him, Paul. But here's a man that feels so passionate about this important initiative that he left a very secure position, I think it was Social Security, if I'm not mistaken.
He's a permanent federal employee with Social Security Administration.
To take this job, to do this mission, not even knowing that it's a temporary position, and not knowing if he's going to be redirected back to the position that he had, that should tell you something about the importance of this census. This man's commitment to do this after a very solid career with the Social Security Administration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, where are you located?
So I work from home, I'm out of Melford, but I go all over New Haven and Middlesex County.
So you won't necessarily be in the New Haven office, or you actually work locally throughout the whole region?
Locally throughout the whole region, yeah.
Having a permanent place to work like in New Haven or...
I was doing the whole state of Connecticut by myself, and then we hired 10 more people that do my job, so now we have the state broken up a little bit. So I'm just focusing now just most in New Haven towards the water, up to 95, up to Guilford.
I have a question?
Sure.
Paul, would you care to address the issue that was fairly prominent in the news like a week ago or so about the citizenship question on the census? Is that something you could address or provide people with details about?
So unfortunately, they don't want us to comment on the citizenship question, just to keep it putty. You know, I can get you in touch with someone else that can...
No, I know all about it.
You're free to speak on it, if you know good, accurate information. They just don't want someone in my position to speak on it.
Changing gears about our town, the age of our town is about, I think about five years above the average for the state?
Four to five years in terms of the median age?
The median age, so I would emphasize what the First Selectman's already said about reaching out into senior citizens, because certainly many senior citizens are very competent and use computers and whatnot, but there are a significant number who do not. So, you know, from your description, it seems like you're trying to encourage responding online. But in a town like ours that has a significantly higher age percentage, I would encourage you in a town like ours to reach out to senior centers or things like that, because they're going to be less likely, I would say, to... Would you say that's a fair statement? Of course, you know, there's exceptions.
Great minds think alike.
We actually talked about this when Paul was in my office, so I think it's important that we get out valid to the senior centers. And we had some problems the last time where some seniors were very anxietous over sharing the information. So the more education we can do, getting in front of the people, I think to your point, Sally, is very important, yes.
After my meeting with the First Selectman, the next day, I actually ran into him very quickly at the senior center. So yeah, if that's the priority that North Haven feels we need to focus on, that's where I'm going to focus on.
And again, let me make it clear, many seniors, and I put myself quickly approaching that age, are very competent and comfortable with responding online, but there's a significant... So I want to make that clear, I'm not grouping people in one, but I think, as you pointed out, it's a factor.
We also, you know, we understand that they are a targeted group, they get targeted for scams, so it is important that they know how to identify a Census employee, how to identify the correct website. And that's for everybody, and we just want to make sure people aren't getting scammed and they're doing what they need to do properly. So no, that's a perfectly valid concern. We want to make sure that people are being serviced, we want to make sure they have, you know, the right information to respond properly, and absolutely, that's a good area to focus attention on.
And not only, you know, the age of our population here, but I don't think a week goes by where we don't hear some news story about another hacking, and people are, you know, reluctant of all ages to, you know, answer. So you mentioned that people have that logo, did you show the logo?
I don't think the logo's on the slides, but I can definitely share that.
You'll be, I think that was important to make that logo well-known.
And we have a leasing program too, where we allow organizations to actually lease out our logo, and they can fill that out, get it back to me, and then we can let you use the logo, and you could, you know, use it as you see fit to promote the 2020 census, so people in North Haven will recognize it.
Right. Well, we definitely want to be counted, because you kind of get lost a congressional seat after 2010.
Yes, that's...
We went from five congressmen to, from six to five, and our electoral vote went from eight to seven. Let's count everybody.
And we will help you as much as we can, because within these 55 or so federal programs, in addition to losing a seat, which is never good for a state, there's so many of these programs that benefit so many people, including our senior citizen population.
Yeah, the meals, a lot of our meals at the senior center are federally backed, right?
Medicare Part B, as I mentioned, you know, with the rising level of autism in our communities, you know, the special ed grants are so important to our school districts, so the integrity of this information is so important to keep those programs alive. So we will continue to work with you, Paul, okay?
Sounds good, I'm looking forward to it.
Good, okay, thank you.
And that we get our fair share of those programs.
What's the estimate on how long it would take to do it online or on paper?
Well, it is going to depend, because you will fill it out once for every family member, so, you know, you will fill it out for yourself, and then you're going to fill it out for, you know, your spouse or your child, or, you know, if you have... Some people have, we have non-traditional homeless now. You might have a child's friend living at your house, you're going to count them. You're going to count whoever's living at your house. So if you have one person, it could take 10 minutes. If you have a large household, five, six people, you might be looking a little bit longer, maybe a half an hour or so. But it is a very simple form to fill out. I think we're hoping to get it around, you know, between 10 minutes to 30 minutes, depending on the household size.
It's well worth the effort, too. So again, this is the first time you're doing it on the phone, so we'd probably expect it to be, you know, somewhere along the same amount of time on the phone.
If you call up, the big thing that they're pushing to is, if you call up, you will get a person. You're going to call a number specific to the language that you want to see, you're going to get a person. So we are hiring hundreds of thousands of people to make sure that when you call up, you get a person. There's not too long of a wait.
That's important.
Very important.
Especially for, like, I think we were talking about, I mean, there are a lot of people who don't use computers.
And that's when the phone comes... We actually, we were discussing very early on with the Lieutenant Governor, what do we do about people who may have learning disabilities or no access to, you know, high-speed internet, because this can be slow on slower internet. And after months and months of people throwing around ideas, somebody finally said, just have them call. And it is, it is one of the easier ways, you can call, every single person will get the opportunity to respond. We'll get the opportunity to respond online, on the phone, or by paper. And we really want to limit how many door knockers we have to hire, although, like I said, they are good-paying jobs, $21 an hour in this area.
Is there an age, a minimum age for the door knockers?
18.
18. I wouldn't think 16, right?
US citizen. If you're male, you have to be registered with the Selective Service, even if you're a veteran, you have to give your Selective Service number. I found that out the hard way. So yeah, you actually have to go to sss.gov and look up your Selective Service number. So yeah, those are the requirements at the moment.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Item number six, I just have one announcement. I am so proud of the Max Sineaway Little League team for the efforts that they put forth representing our town in this state championship tournament. You know, on a personal note, Bill Piper and I met through the Max Sineaway Program years ago when our sons were eight, nine years old. And having seen my son, Bill's son, go through the program, on behalf of myself and the entire Board of Selectmen, to all the Max Sineaway coaches, to all the Max Sineaway sponsors, to all the Max Sineaway umpires, league officials, and to all the young players who played on this magnificent baseball team, we are very proud of each and every one of you. You've truly made North Haven very proud with the way you conducted yourselves and the way you played a sport, baseball, that's very near and dear to me personally and us on the Board of Selectmen. So we're going to be looking towards honoring this team in the coming weeks, and we'll have more about that at a later date. Thank you, congratulations. We're very proud of the entire Max Sineaway Little League and the team that participated and went right to the finals. Thank you very much.
Yeah, they certainly captivated the town for a good period of time, and they got good coverage in the Register, I thought. And so I believe the coach was Mr. Romano, so congratulations to him. It was great to follow.
Especially based on how many times they were down and came back, you know? They just ended up, you know, needing one more time, and it just didn't work out, you know? I mean, they played a lot of games too. I mean, to get to the finals, they had to play and win a lot of games, and they had to come back a number of times to win. I mean, you know, it just shows how much determination and grit they had and how well they played together as a team and never gave up. So they have a lot to be proud of, proud for and of, you know? And we're all proud of them too.
Okay. Sally, if you can handle item seven, then Bill can do number eight.
Yes, we have board and commission appointments, resignations is the title for item seven. We have two items here. I will make a motion for the reappointment of Hugh Davis, 1261 Ridge Road, to the Conservation Commission for a four-year term to expire August 31st, 2023.
You have a motion? Do you have a second?
Oh, second.
I'd like to just say that Hugh Davis, you have been a consummate professional for us. Valerie and I love working with you in the town. I certainly appreciate your service, all the commissions you sit on, all the contributions you've made to the town of North Haven, and I'm very delighted that you're continuing on this particular commission. Thank you, Hugh, for your efforts. So we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye. And then I will make a motion for the reappointment of Raymond Sola, 44 Cloudland Road, to the Conservation Commission for a four-year term to expire August 31st, 2023.
And I'll second that motion.
And Raymond, you are another consummate gentleman. We're so appreciative of what you've done on this commission. Thank you for continuing to stay. We appreciate your efforts, and you certainly have my support also. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill?
And then the next item on the agenda, which is on the agenda, I think every meeting is property tax refunds. So after looking at the list, I have no questions, and I'll make a motion to approve those refunds.
Okay, I'll second that motion, and I don't want to speak for Sally.
Yes, I'm recusing if you can have the minutes reflect that.
And so we have a motion, a second. Sally will recuse. So Bill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, item number nine, the next meeting here with our Board of Selectmen is Thursday, September 5th, at 7:00 PM here in Memorial Town Hall. And we're at the point of this meeting, public comment. Item number 10, any public comment?
No.
Okay. So seeing none, hearing none, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, who are watching on live TV, and thank you for those who'll be watching during the next 30 days. We look forward to seeing everyone in September. And now a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll move.
You move.
Yeah, second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you for joining us.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.